And now I am usually working the crime and courts beat in Spokane. So when I saw your name on the ticket, please not to be confused with your sister.
Yes, my sister.
Judge, please, right?
Yeah. Have you met her?
I have seen her in court. I have seen her do her thing, but I haven't met her personally.
Well, she is absolutely amazing. I mean, she makes, she's just great. She works hard and a public servant for years, so.
And now you've decided to join that sector into a public servant as well. Kind of talk to me about your background. I understand you're a businesswoman in marketing. Ran your own business? Tell me a little bit about that.
So I bought my business back in 1990. I was 27 years old. And I've always wanted to own my own business. And having my parents, you know, be business owners, it was just a natural. We've always worked around, you know, small local businesses. And my parents are in commercial real estate. And I, as a kid, I used to help them sweep out houses as they were built, you know, being built and things like that, working with the builders. And it wasn't a glamorous job, but we worked hard.
You really got your hands into the business, right?
Absolutely. And how much your family being involved is so important. And so my parents really encouraged me and said, you can do it. And that was the greatest tool, to have your parents just totally believe in you. And so I owned a printing and marketing company. In the beginning, I was a franchise, but when my franchise contract expired, I decided to go out on my own and be really brave. And so, and it's been, it was wonderful. So I worked with a lot of small and large companies, a lot of nonprofits. I mean, the community at large. So a lot of people would come in and want help growing their business. So I helped businesses through, grow their businesses through print, direct mail, social media, website design, and things like that. And it was amazing. So I was an agent in the post office. So I loved working with the post office. And so I loved it.
And how would that shape kind of, I mean, if you win this race, you have, it sounds like you have a special place in your heart for small businesses.
I do.
So what sort of things would you like to accomplish in the business sector of Spokane County?
Well, small businesses are still struggling after the pandemic because it was so, I can't tell you how hard it was as a business owner. So I can relate to it, large or small.
You lived through that. You still owned your business at that time.
As a business owner, being in business for so long, you know, I went through 9/11, a lot, every possible, you know, local and national problem with business. But the pandemic was, of course, when they shut down a lot of, you know, business in general, it was devastating. So they, I found myself in a situation where I could have shut down or find myself, because I consider myself as essential business. So I had a license to print prescription pads. And so they considered me an essential business. I lost 85% of my orders the second they shut down business.
Wow. That's a huge hit.
It was, it was absolutely devastating. So I went to all my employees and I said, look, I, you know, because of this, I couldn't keep all of them on. But I gave them my word that I would personally do whatever it takes to keep their medical and dental going. Because I had, one of my employees was a young mother, first time pregnancy and things like that. And she was so worried. And just because of being pregnant and, you know, getting sick with COVID-19. So I just told my employees, we'll weather it. So half my employees said, we'll go on furlough. And then the other half just stayed with me. And I said, you know, I just said, we'll get through this. Hard work and perseverance. And I had a lot of really wonderful people that stepped in and said, we'll still order from you. It won't be as significant, but yeah.
Yeah, everyone kind of tried to do some of what they could, a little bit of what they could to support each other because we all really were feeling it those years, right?
Oh, absolutely. And then a lot of my customers that, you know, needed small jobs, they asked for different payment terms. And of course, you know, I would do, we just have to work with each other. That's what's great about local businesses such as Revival. You just help each other, whatever you can do. And so we just came out, I just came out of the pandemic as surviving that. As a, you know, woman-owned business, I got a phone call one day from an individual that said, hey, Kim, would you be interested? I just happened to be at my desk. And he said, would you be interested in selling your business? And I actually hung up on him. And he said, he called me back and said, Kim, did you just hang up on me? And I go, yes, I did. Are you crazy? We just got out of the pandemic and then the resurgence and, you know, and we were, I was doing, I was doing really well. And I thought, this is my one opportunity to do something I've always wanted to do, was run for office.
This is what you've always wanted to do?
Yeah, besides owning a business. And I've helped a lot of people run for office as far as helping them with their printing. And so that's over the course of 20 years of, you know, talking to them, of how important it was to have somebody, especially in the commissioner's office, have a business background. So I thought, well, let's see where this goes. And literally within two months, I have sold my business. And I gave up everything I had, and it was my one opportunity to do it.
So selling your business was kind of the launching point to running for this election? Wow, that's incredible.
So I'm, I am so excited. So I mean, it's, it's challenging, but I think in the end it will be so worth it.
So you kind of talked about why you decided to run. But what are some of the biggest challenges you think are facing Spokane County right now that you would want to address as commissioner?
Well, the biggest thing is in doorbelling as much as I have in that one-on-one. Because it's, you know, District 1 is a new district. And just getting to know the people and seeing what they have to say. I had in the back of my head an agenda of what I thought. But I'm working for all these people in a district that, you know, is new. So the biggest thing is crime, you know, and public safety. A lot of people are worried about the homelessness issue and camp hope. So first and foremost is public safety. A lot of people that I've talked to at the doorsteps talk about housing. You know, their kids live with them. Numerous homes that I've gone to, they said, well, my kids are, my kids still live with me because they can't afford to buy a house right now. So housing is a huge issue, and then the lack of housing. So that, again, that's an issue. So, and again, the supporting small businesses through programs, whatever I can do to help.
So maybe not as a whole of Spokane County, but yeah, District 1. I mean, is that kind of the main, the main focuses that you'd like to address within District 1? This is what you've learned from door knocking is the crime, the homelessness. That's, those are some things that you'd like to tackle.
Well, and in talking to a lot of older individuals, senior citizens that live in their homes, they're worried that they won't be able to sustain, you know, because of property taxes. And so they, they worry that they're gonna, they won't be able to pay their taxes and they'll have to sell their home and be able to stay in their home. So those are all factors. And as a county commissioner, one of your biggest things is, you know, providing services to the county. They're responsible, they have 2,000 employees, the county's got 2,000 employees. They, there's 50 different departments that they fund. So the sheriff's department, the jail, you know, the Department of Health, things like that. So having a business background, I think, is key to understanding. If you've never had an employee, you know, trust me, I've, you know, stayed up late and just worrying about how am I gonna, how am I gonna do this? And I think that's key to understanding what employees of the county and living on a budget, you know, as far as a business goes.
Running a county is, I mean, you're overseeing the funds. So you're really running a business, right? And that's where you, that's where you've spent most of your life focused on, right?
Well, and also working with nonprofits. And so I think that having the business background and working with nonprofits, I worked with the Boys and Girls Club and things like that, working with kids, has really helped me understand, you know, our community, so.
Well, let's talk about some of those issues that you had mentioned. Homelessness is a continually developing topic, a hot topic in our community. So I wonder, how would you seek to address the homelessness in our community?
Well, the biggest thing that I see is accountability, like where's the money going? I know that the county gives money to the city and the city for services for the homeless. But I think there's two factions of homeless people. There's the true homeless people that are in situations where they have lost their jobs and, you know, hard circumstances that want to be productive, but they've just got lost in the shuffle and are truly homeless. And then there's a different faction of who choose to be homeless. And, you know, you, there's all sorts of different opinions, you know, there. The, I, where my office was for 32 years is on Trent. And it's actually Kitty Corner from the new Trent Shelter.
Oh, really? Okay. What did you think about, what do you think about that location going in there? That shelter on Trent Avenue?
Well, you know, the neighborhood, obviously, all the businesses around my business are super unhappy. I think that they understand a little bit about why they chose that location. But it's definitely, you know, they all feel like it's gonna have an impact. You know, they, we have grass and swales, the city, you know, we've all, I remodeled my building several years ago, and we have these grassy swales. So there's, there's always a worry that, you know, one day we'll walk out of work and see a homeless tent going up, or homeless people, or our businesses are getting broken into. I mean, it's already has happened. You know, over the course of the last, I want to say, two or three years, we've had issues.
In that area already?
In that, well, and it's happening in every city across the country. But more so, you know, the impact of businesses in Spokane, especially the downtown core, has been tremendous. I've talked to so many business owners that are, they're worried because of broken windows, theft, stealing.
You've seen the impacts of homelessness in Spokane County. I wonder, what would it take to address it?
Well, yeah, there, well, the first thing as a county commissioner I want to do is like, look, we, we've given you these, this money for homelessness. Where is it going? Because I don't, I, it just can't be this.
You mean, give the money to the city?
The city to provide services. So where's the accounting of it? What are they specifically doing with that money? And to me, I don't know if it's helping. You have the Trent Shelter, and I think the budget per year is a little over $6 million a year. And personally, I don't think it's sustainable, in my opinion. Yeah, we're, we're getting commerce dollars, but once those funds are, you know.
Depleted.
Yeah, depleted. It, what's gonna happen? And the taxpayers are, and the working people are going, you know, all this money is going into that where, you know, I think that there needs to be, you know, job training and, you know, accounting of, you know, doing intake, like who are these people? Do they have any skills? Help them, you know, you know, get into housing, but have them, you know, get some training so that they can be productive citizens.
Do you think Spokane County thus far has engaged strong enough in finding solutions?
That's a tough one. You know, I think there, we could do a lot better. Let's just say that. Like, one of the doors that I went to, the gentleman worked at Spokane Community College, and he is the head of hydraulics. He's a trainer, and he teaches people for hydraulics and, you know. And he said their training program is, is not full. And he goes, it would be great if the county would work with us and get some of those people who are homeless into the program. And he said, after two years at SCC and this program, that he has, you know, employers that are looking at $60,000 a year jobs. And I said.
It kind of goes hand in hand with what you're talking about, job training and helping support people out of homelessness.
Yeah, out of homelessness. I mean, housing is a key issue too, affordable housing and things like that. So I support any programs that have to do with, you know, getting those people into housing and into, you know, jobs that are, you know, good waging, good wages, so.
You touched on, I mean, county commissioners. You guys working in hand with our law enforcement, Spokane County Sheriff's Office. I wonder, what is your stance on law enforcement? How would you work with our, whoever we decide to vote here? We have Wade Nelson and John Knowles running for Spokane County Sheriff. How do you foresee that relationship?
Well, I fully support the sheriff's department. And a lot of people think, you know, how could you change that? And I said, well, first of all, we need to be very supportive of the sheriff's department and what they do. It's, you know, a dangerous job, as we all know. We've seen it as far as, you know, all the shootings and, you know, all the situations that we both read in the paper and seen online. I support more training. I think that more training makes those officers aware of every possible situation.
More training than, than what is already offered?
Correct.
And why is that?
Well, anytime, you know, education is the key to everything, in my opinion, in continuous training. So things come up all the time, just with the fentanyl crisis and the effect it has on the community and the county of how to handle themselves. And, I mean, it's a great department. I think that's where I think the key is, is, you know, supporting them, number one, giving them training and, you know, communicating with the county on what's happening.
And just this past year, the Board of County Commissioners had invested several thousand dollars into the sheriff's office to address the violent crimes we're seeing. An uptick, huge uptick in drive-by shootings. It's hard for me to even keep up. But we all gathered, media gathered, and they said, no, we want to support our sheriff's office in addressing this issue. What do you think about this? I mean, what, what steps would you want to take as commissioner to address the violent crimes?
Well, again, supporting law enforcement. The other thing is, you know, the jail. That's been a hot topic for years. Our jail is 40 years old. And I know everybody blames, you know, one factor or another about the jail. But the jail actually needs to be replaced. I think it's, I don't want to say, we've had some situations in the jail that have, you know, led to, you know, deaths and things like that.
But do we have the money for a new jail? I mean, where will we find the money?
Well, here's, here's the situation. Because I met with the current head of the jail that is, you know, is in charge of the jail, and the prior person that was in charge of the jail, and just asking them what the situation is. And the jail at most is, to be full is like 600 people. And I think there's close to 1,000 now. So I had heard, you know, and I, I communicate with them all the time because as a county commissioner, I want to, that is, in charge of the sheriff's department and the jail, I just want to keep apprised of what's happening. So that hopefully with the voters, that they will consider me the best, you know, candidate for the position. I want to be able to, you know, on day one, do a good job and know what's going on and be a leader for the people that elected me. And so I know that the most important thing is to get, you know, a bid and communicate to the public and say, is this something that you want? Here's the situation. Because I don't think in the past it's been clearly defined, like, this is what it'll cost, and this is what it'll, you know, in your paychecks of, you know, what it'll cost per month. And I think that the voters need to decide on that based on communicating all the correct information of what it will cost.
So having maybe a more flushed out plan to present to voters and see if they, they support that.
And, you know, just be honest about, this is what it's gonna take. But if you consider someone's house getting, you know, broken into, either deductible's $1,000, plus the time of replacing those items and, you know, replacing the windows and things like that. If you just take that situation alone, and if it costs you 25 cents, you know, per thousand on your, you know, property taxes, let the voters decide. So, but anyway.
Well, I do want to move on to talking a little bit more about, this is a historical race for Spokane County. We have two new districts. So we had three, we added two more, so now we have five districts. And you're running for one of those new districts.
I am.
How do you think having this additional district now focused on representing the west side of Spokane, correct?
Yes.
How do you, yeah, I had to think about it for a second. How do you see that benefiting those that you may soon represent? I mean, giving them more of a voice? What do you think the benefit is to adding these districts?
Well, you know, we've grown. As a county, we've grown, our population has grown. And it does, it will give the people in the district a voice. And I wish this position wasn't partisan because as a business owner for 32 years, it wasn't about Republicans or Democrats. Anybody that came through my door was treated with respect. And I didn't go, oh, are you Republican or are you Democrat? You know, we don't serve, we served everybody. And I think that.
You don't see red or blue?
I don't, you know, I, I really don't. And I wish, just like the mayor's office is nonpartisan, I wish that the commissioners weren't nonpartisan because I would treat everybody with respect. And it'll give them a voice, whether Democrat or Republican. You know, we work for those people. So, and that's what I intend to do.
Now, looking at the primary election results, the Democrats really came forward as the most favorable in District 1 and 2. So going into the general election, does this pose a big challenge to you? What do you think about that?
Well, the key for me has been just out there, being in public and talking to people. So many people I've met at the doors have said, you know, I'm embarrassed. I didn't vote in the primary, but I will vote in the general. And just, you know, a lot of people goes, I was on vacation, I did this, or I normally don't vote in the primary. And I said, no matter what you do, please vote. I mean, the turnout for Republicans, and it was better for the Democrats, is, it's actually shocking because there are so many people that would give their right arm to vote and have a voice.
Right, so, yeah. Now tell me a little bit more about, so how long have you lived in the new District 1?
I've lived in, off in Row, that's where I live, for four years. So I moved in Halloween, and I absolutely love it. So it's a mixed development, but I absolutely love it. And a lot of my neighbors have moved from all over. One of my neighbors moved from Memphis, and people from Seattle. And there's a lot of people from Spokane too, so I love it.
So we're actually, you touched on a note there, we're seeing a lot of people moving to Spokane. And just all around in the inland northwest, we're seeing that boom of population here in our community. So I wonder, as county commissioner, what steps do you think need to be taken to really prepare or even address the impacts we're already seeing from this growth?
Well, yeah, there's impacts everywhere, on the infrastructure and the roads and things like that. Not only, you know, that's a concern a lot with people in my district is the roads. But, you know, we live in a city that gets a lot of snow and then hot weather, and that has a lot of wear and tear on our roads. And people understand that for the most part, so. But I'm huge on communicating, you know, being in the marketing and communications end of it. I think we can always do a better job communicating with the public on, you know, addressing and listening. I think that is really the key of the county commissioners, so.
Look, a couple of campaign notes that you have here. You have endorsements from well-known leaders in Spokane County. You have sheriff, current sheriff, Ozzy Kenezovich, who's retiring after this year. Spokane Mayor Nadine Woodward, and Spokane City Council's two conservatives, as well as former mayor David Condon. What should this mean to voters?
Well, they know me, they know my business background. They know I care about my, you know, the community I live in. And I think that's key. I'm not going anywhere. It's not a stepping stone to a larger career. They know that I have a lot to give and that I care. So again, I try to, these are just people that have put their name out there to say, she's a, you know, a great person. And I think people want to see someone that has got a business background. So, you know, some of my biggest supporters are other business owners, you know, that have, I've never worked with, that have said, I love your, that you have a business background, and I heard from so-and-so how much you care about the community, so.
I'll let you have some tea.
Enjoy some of your tea with the bubbles in there.
Thank you. Now, I love the orange spice. I usually get the orange spice around Christmas time. And now that it's fall, it's a good, it's a good flavor, right? How is it with the sparkling in there?
I absolutely love it. And you know, Revival Tea Company, like I said, they're an American success story, small business, so. And I'm all about supporting local.
That's great. Now, I want you to spill the tea for me, if you will, Kim. Tell me, how are you going to stand out against your opponent here in this general election?
Well, I think my background stands for itself. I've been in, out there for years. My service to the community and things like that is really how I'll stand out. And I, you know, I'm, you know, I love this community. And I think that experience matters, really. And if you look at me versus my opponent, you know, the experience that I have and the background I have and the trust that I have really worked on with people that I've worked with and for, and to make this just a better community. I think overall, people will look at that and realize that, that, in my opinion, will stand out the most.
And it sounds like the relations that, excuse me, it sounds like the relationships that you've already formed in your experience as a business owner would help serve you as a commissioner running the county business, right?
Absolutely. Because my motto in my business was, it's about service. So it wasn't about printing, it wasn't about anybody. It was about service to the community. You know, it was about service to my employees, my clients, my family and the community.
So, yeah. A couple other questions from your campaign here. Now, let's see, we talked about law enforcement. I guess, in your time living in District 1, you said four years, do you think that's enough time to know the issues that really impact that part of our county?
Well, where I used to live before that, I lived for 28 years and which is right, literally, on the outskirts of District 1.
Okay, so you're pretty close to the.
Oh, very close. And I've always lived on the side of town, on the north side. And so, and I know a lot of people that live in my community already, so. And it's not like I lived in the valley and then just moved, you know, to where I live currently. So I think that, you know, and again, I feel like I'm so relatable to everything, to some of the things, the challenges that are happening in Spokane. So when they talk about roads, you know, I can totally relate. You know, a pothole or, you know, you know, seeing the homeless issues that have happened, so. So anyway, but I think that that will, you know.
So, anyway. Well, one final question, just what is a big takeaway that you hope voters take from our chat today that you may not have touched on yet?
Well, again, just, you know, it's not about, you know, me. It's about we, what we can do together as a community. So my, I want them to know that, you know, I'm, you know, open and will listen and, you know, I'm here to make a difference and just protect Spokane and the quality of life that we have here is key. I think, and looking at. I think, and looking at other cities, I, I think they've, they've lost touch with the people that they serve. And I just won't forget that with my background and things like that, so.
And, and on the note of kind of collaboration, how will that translate into serving on the Board of County Commissioners? I mean, we could see the first Democrat on the board in decades. What would that look like for you?
Well, I think that I could work with anyone, really. And it's not, I think that we'll all work together for the betterment of the community. I really do. I could work with, I'm looking for, I am so looking forward to, you know, serving and things like that. So whoever wins, I'll do whatever I can to work with them. And I'm, I'm looking forward to whoever that might be. And hopefully it'll be me and, I mean, I really want to do this. You know, for me to give up what I had before and put myself out there, hopefully people will look at just, you know, my resume and know I have a clear record of, in my opinion, success. It might be small, but it was successful, so, I mean.
Well, thank you so much, Kim, and good luck to you on the general election.
Well, and thank you for the tea.
Cheers. Cheers, thank you.